Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Get Harbor City Council Study Session of Thursday, January 26, 2023. The time is 3 o'clock PM, and I will, we have some councilors, council members on Zoom with us today and some in person. So I'll start with the in-person council members, council member Wood. Here. Here. Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Shorset.
Here.
Councilmember Rodenber.
Here.
Councilmember Lichten.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
All right, all seven present and in the room. Um, we'll go right into our first discussion item, which is our proposed code and or and release changes related to alcohol in park buildings. And this report will come to us from our parks manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So, um, the city was approached in November by the Get Harbor Boat Shop about their desire to be able to serve alcohol at events at both the Evan boat building for fundraising purposes, and then to allow renters at the BoYard House, the Brick House, to be able to serve alcohol at their events. And the interpretations of city code showed that that is not currently allowed. So we are proposing a change to Harbor Municipal Code 924 oh 20, uh, or Chapter 9, to change the definition or add a couple of sentences in the alcohol prohibited in parks section that allows exceptions for buildings that have a lease with the city. And then that would also include rental agreements, you know, under the leases for the BoYard House. Um, and then it changes park operating hours as well, just kind of cleans up a little dust to dawn rule about these rental agreements. But, um, the SCANZI Net Shed Foundation was also approached and they would desire to have alcohol at some of their fundraising events. We also approached the Harbor Wild Watch and while they thought that in the future they may want to do that as well. So all those require lease amendments. So we are proposing some language in, I put the SCANZI Net Shed Foundation as an example. And, um, under the amendment would have a restriction on use, say that they could I'll just paraphrase, but, uh, they can have events that support their mission as a nonprofit to have alcohol at events. Um, and it would be required to follow all Washington Liquor and Cannabis Board rules for permits and licenses and comply with those, but those permits. So it's limited to the building and not to be consumed in the park. Um, and violation, we added some language on violations because the Lincoln language in their lease talks about they need to correct a violation for 30 days, but this is a little bit different circumstance. So we propose similar language for the BoYard House. Um, well, the Get Harbor Boat Shop. Their situations with their two buildings are a little bit different, but they are also asking for some other changes. So, um, including what the allowed uses in the boat shop building are and, um, the other one, the terms of the length of their lease. So we're still working on those. So I had it, these will have to come before council in another session to be approved, but, um, those are, we're looking at and working with attorney. So, um, that's about all I have. Do you have any questions?
Everybody's hands up. Okay, councilmember Henderson.
Okay. Well, thanks for that presentation. A couple of questions. One is, have we checked to make sure that if we do give guidance to allow this, it's not linked to dusk to dawn because in wintertime dusk comes pretty dark early. I just want to make sure that they don't say something like, you can't do it dusk to dawn. January dusk is like what, 3:30 or 4:00.
No, they were, um, so we specifically put in language under park operating hours that would be part of the associated code change that, that adds an exception for if there's a lease or rental.
Okay. And then the next question is, and it really applies more for the, um, the BoYard House. It said that, you know, alcohol would be allowed as long as they follow all liquor and cannabis board permitting and licensing requirements. The way the house is set up, anybody could, you know, go online and, and how would they know exactly what they would have to do to get a liquor cannabis board permit? They have a bottle of wine when they rented the house.
Uh, we would put that in the hands of, uh, the boat shop.
Okay.
Who is running the rentals and they are familiar with the rules and would try to make sure that that would be a requirement of their lease that they tell, at least tell them to go.
Do we know if it's a pretty onerous process?
I think.
$10,000 bond.
No, they're actually only $10 for a banquet.
Yeah.
Um, the special occasion licenses for larger events, which wouldn't happen at the BoYard House, but could possibly happen at the. Right. Yeah.
Or the BoYard.
The BoYard Building.
So the house itself. Someone coming in with a couple of bottles of wine.
And it's already limited to 30 people.
Yeah.
So.
A lot in that house.
Yeah.
Okay.
Special occasion licenses are a little more onerous.
Cool. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Wood. Uh, yes, does this also extend to the BoYard House?
Yeah. We had discussed that and it does show in the lease that that is park can be rented privately with the house. So, um, it, we, I believe it's liquor licenses, the banquet permit or whatever would require you to mark like a, we can put a little rope with a sign on it.
They did that for us.
Okay.
When we rented it.
Oh.
They had a sign across the deck that said private party. So they restricted it.
Yeah. And then they can put on the other side, no alcohol beyond this point.
Yeah. Okay. So it is allowed on the deck.
I, I believe that was our discussion.
Yes, because the deck is part of the lease area.
Area. That's why I was right here. So yeah. Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rodenber.
Okay. Um, I think I know the answer to my question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. In your sample, it's SCANZI Net Shed. Obviously that also, the same thing would apply for the BoYard House. The Brick House has its, has a separate lease agreement. And so that one would talk about people who were leasing that space as well, right? Yeah. And would we need to do that? Does the SCANZI Net Shed, do they lease? Do we need that or?
They have a lease. Yes.
But do they lease, do they?
Oh, do they?
Rent, do they rent out? That's, I don't believe so.
Yeah.
It's not part of their lease agreement anyway.
Okay. That's what I was just gonna, that's just what I wanted to clarify that.
We were covered with the. Yeah, there are different properties, but customize it to what.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Councilmember Martin.
Thank you. Well, um, like a restaurant, you have to have a posting that you're applying for a liquor license. Will all of these entities have that? Or will that be on our website? Just so the public is aware. I'm not opposed to this at all, but just so the public is aware that there is going to be potentially a liquor license allowed on these premises. And then is the entity itself have to allow, will allow liquor and go through the liquor and cannabis board? And then say if I want to rent one of the facilities, then I would have to have a banquet permit. So is it a two-tiered licensing process? Excuse me for this. Thank you.
Since they aren't proposing, uh, well, I'm not sure exactly what SCANZI does, but they have to hire like a bartender and stuff who's been trained. I don't think they need a full-on liquor license like a restaurant would. It's more of a, um, event by event type of license.
It would be selling. It would be serving.
They could sell it like if they had a concert. There's different tiers of license. Like if they're having a concert and it's a cash bar or an auction or something, it's, it's a different permit than if you were having like a retirement party and you're just like help yourself to some wine. Right.
Oh, sorry. It's hard, but that would be it. Councilmember Lichten.
Yes, thank you. Um, I just wanted to comment. I've actually done one of the, when you're hosting an event at a public park type of thing, um, I hosted my mother-in-law's wake. And we did it at Lakewood Gardens and I went online and you fill out a banquet permit and there's, you have to register yourself. You have to assure that no one under 18 will be served. You can't sell, um, alcohol at the event. Um, and I went and looked at it recently. It's the same form. It's basically a one-page form. And you get an immediate permit that you have to have posted on premises. But the actual, um, site that we were at in regards to Julie's comments didn't have a liquor license per se. But we had to go through affidavits of this is how this will be handled. And it was pretty strict. Um, if anybody's concerned about that, but it was a fairly simple process. And when I booked it with Lakewood Gardens, they just give you the link and say, if you're going to serve alcohol, here's what you need to do. Um, and there's, they're pretty strict rules, but they're very clear and you actually have to have them posted. Um, and in certain situations, if I remember right, you actually have to have a person who watches any alcohol that's being served. Um, so that they assure that it's not being served to minors, I believe. Um, but you could take a look at that. But in regards to, um, the Parks Commission, I know they talked about this at their meeting. I haven't watched that meeting. Was there any concern, the pros and cons raised? And what was the feeling overall of the Park Commissioners when you talked about this?
They were, uh, very supportive.
Okay, great.
That was there as well. They didn't have too many concerns. I thought that would be a good idea.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Wood. Does this apply to Crescent Creek Park as well under the? Is this only, what does this apply to?
For now, it's just, uh, the Get Harbor Boat Shop and SCANZI Net Shed Foundation leases. Um, yeah, we would, I don't think that we would go in the direction, that's too open, like the rented.
Right, yeah, right. I just want to make sure it wasn't including the Pavilion in Crescent Creek.
No.
Rent.
No, um, we do say rental agreements there to kind of cover, um, when the, when the BoYard House gets rented out because that's kind of a sub lease agreement. Um, but we're not inclined at this time to look at any other parks that have open air structures. If we had a, we acquire more with buildings that can be used, you might look at that in our leases, but.
Yeah, it would have to say in the lease, as it says pursuant to the terms in the lease. So we could have a separate lease where we would say, no, we're not going to allow alcohol to be served as part of this lease.
Okay. Who, who else has the possibility of leasing out something other than the city and a park?
So.
So who else, what other entity has the possibility of having a lease in a, for an event in a park? Is it only the city then? So we don't have to really worry about a Mary Lou coming in and renting out the Pavilion in Crescent Creek or anything like that because there's no lease. And so they can't serve alcohol.
Worked, right. At the nail of the lease we have that is in the same, of the same type of lease is with Harbor Wild Watch. SCANZI House.
Okay. Yeah, and there has not been interest from them.
Yeah. So there may be in the future, but we would modify their lease at that.
Do we, do we need to put in here something so that people who want over that Crescent Creek know that they can have?
It's in the Parks Code that alcohol is forbidden in parks, which is what brought this up.
Okay.
In the first place. So, and it says, except.
Right.
If consumed in a lease area or rental or pursuant to the terms and lease at rental. So that would not be allowed in the terms of Crescent Creek.
Okay.
Rental.
Just don't want anybody trying to think that they, that maybe something they can have. You know?
Yeah. I think it, I haven't seen the rental agreement certainly for Crescent Creek, but I guess it says it's not allowed.
Okay, um, don't see any other questions from council. So I know you all are looking for a direction. Whether or not we want to have them bring this back to a council meeting for, and you know, for adoption of this new code change. So I guess just show the hands if you're supportive of this coming back. Okay, one, yeah, so majority is support. That's great.
Okay, and the leases as well?
Yes. So any proposed lease changes that you are working on whenever you're ready to bring those forward, that would be great.
Great. We'll do that. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Um, our next discussion item is the overview of our Water System Emergency Response Plan. And this report is from our Public Works Director Jeff Langham and welcome Jeff. Jeff and Edward.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Council. The memo that was brought into you for this item was fairly, it was intentionally like that. We'll hope to get into a little more detail here. We're not going to get into everything in the report and we intentionally did not provide the reports, not a public document. Um, so just to, to know group that, uh, I'm going to share with my screen. I think all of you or most of you at least know this. Um, I'm going to share with you the water purveyors and the city's water service area uh, on the New Harbor Peninsula. So our city water service area is in blue. It's kind of hard to tell if there's an orange, by the way, this is the Harbors Alice.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mike Simmons. The blue and orange dotted lines is the city limits, as they said today. Uh, and so you can kind of see the city's water service area is more than two-thirds of the city limits. So we don't serve all of the city residents, but we serve most of them. Um, within this water service area in blue, the city is responsible for providing clean and safe drinking water and providing some prescribed emergency water flows for fire events through our water system. The overall protection of the water system is our staff's highest priority for the, for the water department staff. One of the key factors that we consider when we are operating the water system is how we respond to emergencies. The Environmental Protection Agency, um, requires us to have an emergency response plan. And so that's one, uh, that's the checkbox we have to check to, to make sure that we've done this, but it, we do good planning in the water department regardless. Um, but that response plan needs to be kept current. And so this response, emergency response plan we did recently was an update from I think our 26th Emergency Response Plan. Um, and this emergency response plan is uh, following up a risk and resiliency assessment that we completed last, I think it was August, somewhere around August. And so we completed this risk and resiliency assessment. And that assessment drove this update to our emergency response plan. The plan itself, um, contains the guidelines, procedures and resources that we use to prepare for and respond to emergencies. Um, as I said before, the plan is a secure document. Um, there's a limited number of staff who have access to it. It's not kept on our server. Um, and so, uh, those people who need to know about some of these details have access to it. We use this to manage our water system in response to emergencies. These emergencies could be intentional acts to damage our water system, contaminate our water system. Uh, they could be natural environmental hazards. Um, or other accidents, other issues that come up that could harm the staff, uh, the public or any of our infrastructure. The plan itself, it's a good-sized document. Um, it has general procedures in it on, and it has also very specific procedures in it on how we should respond to those issues that are of greatest risk to the system. And when we went through the risk and resiliency assessment, we kind of touched on what some of those facilities, some of those areas would be. So I'm not going to repeat all that, but we do have a variety of stakeholders that we work with when it comes to emergency responses. I'm going to give you just a quick, uh, sample of what we look at. And this is one of the tables from the emergency response plan. So we work when we have an emergency, we're police department, city engineer, public works, operations, administration, fire district and and Pierce County, uh, front emergency management and the health department, Department of Health and the county health department. So that's who we work with when we have an emergency that we respond to.
So. So do you have any other agencies you'd be working with, like higher level state or federal, FBI, I mean, if somebody? If we attempted to contaminate something that's beyond our local police jurisdiction, not jurisdiction, but capability of investigating. So are there real contacts like at the FBI or other places?
No, we would rely on the police partners to reach out to that. So.
Um, my question is kind of a follow-on probably for Rogers. Who are Councilmember Henderson?
You've called me Roger. Sir.
Sir. Yeah, right. The communication aspect of this, if something happens that the public needs to know about, are you relying on one of these stakeholder groups to do that communication for you?
No.
Or how does that happen?
We will be working with administration, with that under administration. In fact, we're, that's, that's next on my.
Okay. Sorry.
You are. So the, the plan. The plan identifies the critical facilities. And it has an emergency response command system, like you see ICS command systems. It has that all laid out in there. What position in the city or when any one of these agencies we need to be talking with and it has a communications plan. And so we know who we need to talk to depending on the emergency and how we're going to get the board out.
The size of the event too, right? And we dictate where that goes to.
Right.
Yeah. So I'm going to hand it off to Jeff. Jeff's going to provide some specific examples of actions that we would take in response to emergency that we have.
Yeah. So some of the things, well, one of the things we did as part of this, our risk and resiliency assessment is kind of look at ourselves internally, how we were structured and stuff. And the way we've always been structured in the past was just all of our maintenance techs. You might work in the water department sometimes. Uh, you might be in the parks department or people with water licenses might be in the water streets department, not necessarily in the water department. So this kind of helped us. It was something we were talking about internally already, but it was kind of that thing to help spearhead us to that point of really looking at creating the water department and the water operator series. So, um, what we're anticipating on doing there, once we get that formalized and we actually get people on board with that is actually have people that are operators in the water department. That's what they do. And what this assessment really kind of, you know, you look at things from an attack standpoint, you always think of external, but one of the things they talk about is internal, right? In turn, maybe just rental employee or something like that. So these people in this water series will be going through background checks annually, right? So we'll be sitting on top of that. That'll be a huge important part of that, being an operator with the city of Get Harbors, you'll get those background checks. But, you know, some of the things we're looking at to try and events that might happen, something that happened just recently up at our North Tank, uh, we do, we've done monthly checks that are over remote tank sites, but people getting in there and trying to do damage to them, right? And so just recently, uh, last Friday, I think it was, guys went up there to do some work on it, but walked through kind of the gate. Right? So it's happening right now. It's things that we are constantly always looking for. So, and then another thing, another emergency that you might not think a lot about, but in the summer, our wells right now were taxed a lot of times with those wells. Um, you guys would, it'd be amazed how much water or how much time those things are running, our pumps are running and why well nine is so important for us. But, um, if we get to a point where it's an extended period of summer and a drought, right? And then how we disseminate that information out to the people. So those are some of the events that we look at as part of this. And just, you know, making sure that we get the information out there via social media, email, uh, the radio. We have, I, we're actually, I think we have a contract with the local radio station KGGH. Yeah, HP and then also Cairo 710 is our second radio station. So.
Do we have cameras?
We do. And the problem with those camera systems right now is that they went from the 3G to 5G cellular upgrade and procurement issues, the company we use with that has not been able to get that upgraded equipment to us to be able to get them installed. So we're actually meeting next Friday, uh, with another vendor to locate in those cameras. It's something unbudgeted, but we're, it's too important for us to.
Yeah.
So we're going to meet with them and talk to them about a different camera system and, uh, maybe even higher security we're going to do at the tank sites.
Thank you.
Do you, um, practice your response plans?
So that's one of the things that the ERP talks about, right?
Yeah.
Is drilling or just coming up with, and to be really honest, we, we never have in the past. But with this ERP, it's something that myself, Jeff and George Flanagan, our water supervisor, um, we're going to sit down and come up with some different drills to do. Even if it's just a water main break, right? That's an emergency that we need to know. Have guys trained, a lot of our staff right now have never been on a water main break and what to do. Yeah, we'll talk to them about it, but talking to them and performing. So, um, it's something definitely like in my head, I come up with, I was an old volunteer firefighter at Get Harbor Fire for years and we used to drill every Tuesday, you know, and we would go through those scenarios. They'd create the scenario for us. We'd come in and respond to it. And great learning tools, but it's something we're definitely.
I think it's really important to do that.
Absolutely.
Uh, Councilmember Martin has a question. Go ahead, Councilmember Martin.
Thank you. Um, so unfortunately I've sat through a lot of incident commands and, and let a lot of incident commands, unfortunately, I would say. Just curious, I know tabletops are, are helpful, but until you get in the mix of a, an emergency, sometimes you don't know what you're going to face. How well-trained do you think in how diverse diversely is our staff trained in, in, in the incident command process? Cause it's kind of foreign, especially when you have, um, Jeff, you get in there and you're heading up all this stuff and all of a sudden you're not leading it. You're, you're, you're not the incident commander. And those get difficult because it's natural that we're in these roles. And then to realize in the incident command system, you play, you play a very different role than what you typically play sometimes. And just getting used to those functions. Just curious where we were on that. I mean, I, I, you know, it's one of those things, nobody has enough time, effort and money to do. And yet I'll darn it, when you need it, you really need it. So.
We have not had specific incident command system training for a while here at the city. Um, it's probably been 2015 since we've done that. And, uh, but we have, we have our, um, our MAC, um, multi-agency coordinated committee that we work with based on Pierce County Fire District Five from the New Harbor Peninsula, Keaton's area. And they help us with that. So they have been helping us keep us feeling comfortable that we can respond to an emergency. So is the police chief. Police chief is our lead here. And so, um, but we have been working and council approved as part of the budget. Uh, uh, safety officer and a risk manager, and I believe we're going to be working once that position comes on board to be a person that's going to help us with that.
Yeah, there's several councilmembers and the mayor have brought up, um, emergency management recently and in the past, you know, year and a half. And the chief, police chief and I have talked about that. We're preparing to get the mayor set up first, knowing, uh, her role and then the intent to have staff training very soon. Kelly, uh, the chief has sent his staff through the training recently noting that the police would be our uh, primary contact. And so once they're all trained, all of our staff again will be trained here at the city. Additionally, I met with Chief Dome, uh, Fire District Five earlier this week and we talked about a coordinated effort between the city and the fire district and Pierce County for emergency management. And so he had some ideas for how we could better prepare ourselves for that. And I look forward to bringing those forward.
That's great. Thank you all. Yeah, not a surprise that you're all on top of this as always. Um, and then the second question is, Jeff, you were mentioning that and rightfully so, that you don't have this document in too many hands. um, in too many hands, and there's understandable reasons for that. Uh, if this document resides within the offices, do we know, do we have that document in one or two other secure places? That if for some reason something happens to the building you're sitting in, you're unable to obtain that? That there's another way to to access that document, you probably have already thought about it, but just another thought, thanks.
We have it, we have it in the cloud, it's just not on a publicly, or if it's not in a place where the general public or even the employees can access. Yeah, you have to be, we'll, we'll, we make sure that only those who need access will have access.
And on a smaller level too, with something you were talking about, it's not on that big of a scale, but one of the things that we've been trying to promote too is just interaction with the fire department right now, so they have that training center over at five oh, we've gone over there a couple of different occasions now. They had some trench safety training, we'd send guys over there, and like I told, a lot of times that training might not pertain directly to us, but it's build relationships with those guys, right? So we're in that moment, we're communicating, we know who they are, they know who we are, so we're working on that too.
Some of the training we do, um, and it's very intentional, especially for the water department, is we have our crew, ideally every other year or so, install a water main, do a water main replacement project. And you might say, wow, we can do a lot more with larger contracts and build them out with public works contracts, but we need to make sure that all of our crew, because we've gone through what we have, in the past year and a half, I think we have half of our crews brand new.
Yeah.
And so we want to make sure that they know how to do water mains in our area with our equipment. And we have one, is it Harbor?
Harbor Master.
Harbor Master Lane is is on, and that's something that Jeff and his crews are getting ready to move forward with, is it this time?
Yep.
So they're, they're getting the materials together, they're gonna get ready for this, and they're gonna be doing a water main project. If for nothing else, I mean, we need to do the project, but we're not putting it as part of a larger public works contract, because that means they get to do the training.
It's huge for them to understand in their head how that's constructed in the ground, that they need to go in an emergency or repair.
When you're pouring rain at midnight, when they're sleepy.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Um, we have something similar, although it's not quite as critical, still critical for our sewer system. I mean, if somebody takes out a list station and a big one, um, that could result in relatively big health hazard for folks, and I understand you still got water, but the water that's coming out of there is the, you know. Are you, is there a similar network setup for that?
Well, the help, I mean, sorry, the wastewater group, they participate
Okay.
Uh, also, um, and are involved with, though, a little less involved with the MAC. But we don't have the same type of document for wastewater.
But they have uh, systems in place, that redundancy pumps and stuff, so if someone were to take like the power to the station out, we've got gas-powered screw suckers there that automatically kick on, uh, take that, we've got portable units too, where we could take it to a site of the station.
Yeah, and also opportunity that I think I had mentioned to Jeff and Jeff in a leadership team meeting, when Washington Water met with me, they do those tabletop exercises, and they do them really well, and they're trying to bring in more and more and more entities to participate in that all at the same time, so it would be city, fire, Washington Water, and they do those tabletop exercises, they're trying to do them twice a year now, instead of just once a year. Um, so they did one, I think in the fall, they're doing another one hopefully I think this summer or late spring. Um, and so that's an opportunity for the city to participate in something like that as well, where we're not running it, but we're just there
See.
To learn and participate and meet all of the, you know, the people that are in charge of all these different entities. So it's an option that we can always explore um, there, and then I'm gonna be meeting with um, Scott Booth, I believe this. Uh, he took over for Eric Waters, um, next week to ju- just myself, he and I to learn, me, for me to learn more about the MAC myself, and just um, kind of hear from his side of things where the city fits into that, and obviously, the chief is very well immersed in in that, but I I just wanted to kind of hear it for myself. So we're all sort of thinking about this and meeting with various folks and just trying to just get a, get a good grasp on it and get a handle on what we would do.
Well, I'd like to thank the city for taking this seriously with the unfortunate rise of domestic terrorism, this is something we have to take, but we're seeing it. Shooting out power stations and substations, and so to be ready for it is the best we can do, and I appreciate you guys taking this seriously. You got it, you have our support, you have my support for sure.
I know it's just, it's an overview, was there any direction you've been looking for?
No, it's just.
An update, okay. I think you, thank you guys, do you have anything else for, I appreciate the update and the effort.
I I'll bring up one thing that I brought up at council meeting, there's money from FEMA. Do we need that? Can we use that anywhere? Do we know? Well, it's very helpful information that you brought up earlier this week, and so we're, we're looking into that, we'll see if it'll be for local jurisdiction coordination, and I brought that up to Chief Dome as well.
Okay, good.
We will use whatever resources are available to us to really hone this in and have everybody be very comfortable with the process of what we would do in emergencies. Well, thank you both so much for your work on this, for getting that, um, was it R A A, whatever.
R R.
R R A. For getting that, getting that.
The city ERP.
Yeah.
Yes, I I'm I'm starting to learn these extra names, let's just overlook some letters, it'll mean something.
Yeah.
You'll know what I'm talking about. Um, Councilmembers, Washington Line, did you have anything else that you wanted to add? I thought I saw all the hands raised, but I didn't want to miss any of you, so. Okay, not seeing any other hands. Okay, well, thank you guys, um, if there is nothing else for the good of the order, we are like lightning speed today. I would entertain most of you adjourned.
Unlovedly adjourned.
Second motion.
Hallelujah. All right, meeting adjourned, have a great night, everybody.
Thanks, everyone, good night.
Thanks.